Welcome to the Ben Don't Break Podcast. I'm Aaron Schweitzer, your host and publisher of The Source Weekly, along with our co-host Laurel Bronze. This podcast is powered by The Source Weekly, Ben's locally owned newspaper. Listeners tune in to find out how our community is dealing or not dealing with our new normal. Today, we are joined by Redmond City Councilor Clifford Evelyn. Hope I said that right. Evelyn?
Yes.
Clifford was elected in 2020 and is currently serving a four-year term. He's a retired law enforcement officer and he spent most of his career working for the Clark County Sheriff's Department of Washington State near Portland. He advanced up to the ranks to commander. Currently serves as the Executive Board President of the New Priorities Family Services of Redmond. He attended New York University for Business Administration and attended LA Trade Tech College where he studied business management. He also served in the US Navy as a naval officer and went to Naval Management School in New Orleans. Cliff, thanks for being here with us today.
You're most welcome. I'm glad to be here.
Man, New Orleans is one of my favorite towns. That must have been a great time of life, being, being in the Navy and being in New Orleans at the same time.
You know how that could turn out, right?
A lot of fun.
Yes, it was.
Let's start off by talking about your background. First, how did you end up in Redmond? And before that, in Vancouver, Washington, both areas pretty far from New York City and pretty different in character.
Well, that's a long story, but I'll give you the really digest version. Actually, I grew up in New York City. I grew up in Harlem, New York City. Actually, I was born two blocks from Central Park. I lived on 112th Street and Eighth Avenue. Anyway, through my life, you know, my parents were so Caribbean descent. They're from Trinidad. And I basically went to Catholic school in New York City. And then we moved to the projects at the very end of Harlem, which was expensive back in those days, you know, in comparison to tenement buildings. Anyway, Catholic school, you know, my parents sent me to Catholic school. I'm sure because I have the ADHD, I think, or something, but the nuns took care of that. And so I went to Catholic school and then I went to a public high school, graduated. And after I graduated, I was just kind of running the streets of New York, just having fun, you know, being a young man. And I started getting into things I probably shouldn't be getting into. And I said, I just kind of like, was kind of laying low. And then eventually what happened was I got drafted when I got out of high school because you had to have a draft card back then. So I got drafted and the weekend before I was supposed to leave, I got into a car accident, but I really didn't get injured. But then when I went down to check in at the draft place where you went to back in those days, they said, has anyone been in an accident? And I said, yes, I was in an accident, but I didn't get hurt. They said, no, step out of line. So I stepped out of line. Well, that actually was my saving grace because everyone was going to Vietnam. They were sending the front line to Vietnam, you know, they put me on hold. They gave me a lottery number. And so I didn't go. And then the lottery number, when it got near my number, the lottery ended. So I escaped the draft. Okay. So I started working a little stores. I worked in Macy's on 34th Street and things like that. And then finally, when I was 28 years old, I decided to go in the Navy. So I went in the Navy pretty late. And that's what turned my life around. And that's what got me to the West Coast because I had never been on the West Coast ever. And everybody was in boot camp with me, landed on the East Coast, and they sent me to Portland, Oregon back in 1977. And that was like Redmond now, or worse, actually, you know, and it was really interesting. And it was, yeah, it was very interesting. And that's how I ended up in Oregon, on the West Coast. Then after I got out, I went back to New York. Then I moved to California and raised my son by myself. And then I ended back in Portland, Oregon, and things started changing.
Well, as a Catholic school refugee with ADD myself, I can, I can relate to a lot of what you're talking about.
You know, you know exactly what I'm saying.
What you mean.
So your win in last year's race for Redmond City Council was an insurgent victory in some respects, where you gained a lot of support knocking on doors and connecting with business owners in downtown. What was it like to run and campaign in Redmond?
Well, to tell you the honest truth, I had moved here in 2017 and I was joking around with people that I met, you know, at the time. And I said, I'm gonna be mayor, I'm gonna be mayor. I told my insurance lady that and all that. I was just kind of joking, right? But the next thing you know, people started talking and I would always sit in Starbucks, which is my favorite, what I call it, my satellite office. And I was sitting Starbucks and talked to everyone that came in, just kind of, you know, say hello. Because that's the New York type of attitude. So I got to know everyone, you know, and just talking to them. And it was really good conversation. And then as time went on, people started saying, you should run for mayor. You should run for mayor. They wanted me to run for mayor. And I said, I don't know. I gotta think about that. You know, I'm retired now and relaxed, you know. And as time went on, it was getting closer to two, in last year, 2020. And I started thinking about it. And so I sat back and said, well, I'm not doing anything and I want to stay occupied. And I like helping people. And so I just got a call to service again, you know, and something said, go for it. So I went for it, submitted my paperwork and everything. And then I just started beating the streets, you know. Because of COVID, I couldn't go door to door. But what I did, I went and talked to a number of the business owners. I put a number of signs up. I got on Instagram because I'm not good at all that stuff. So I got all you young people to get the Instagram going for me and Facebook. And the next thing you know, I was launched, you know. And people know that, you know, one thing about me, I'm very honest, you know, I'm here for the people. I told them I would be their voice and I am going to be their voice. And I'm, I'm not afraid to speak up. And I'm not a rubber stamp for anyone. So I think they was impressed by that. It was either that or they thought it was blazing saddles, you know, 2021, you know, blazing saddles is, but anyway. I just got in, you know, and I'm very happy. What it says though, is that the people want us something different and they want someone they think they could depend on. And I'm that individual for sure.
Well, Clifford, Laurel and I are always somewhat surprised, I think, by the number of Redmond podcasts that we do. Our listeners, consistent listeners will see there's a trend, there's just a lot of change and a lot of energy in Redmond these days. And I think your election is somewhat part of that. You've been critical of the way that Redmond's been run in the past. And one of those critiques is that despite the fact that Redmond's real estate is, market's booming, many residents are still coming to Bend, even though Redmond calls itself the hub, they're, you know, they come to Bend for a lot of their fun. Tell us more about your viewpoint and what you would see changing or how that could change.
Well, that's one of the things I looked at once I got on, or before I got on actually, was we have an airport and the airport does make us the hub. But I'm sitting there thinking, well, we have an airport, but people fly into our airport. They rent a car for the rental car place at the airport and they go to Bend. And I couldn't figure that one out. And what I figured out was the fact that we have a golf course over there, Juniper Golf Course, which is a lovely golf course. I'm not a golfer, a very nice golf course, costs a lot of money, you know, but I think it was marketed incorrectly. You know, if you're going to do something, you got to market it as well. And I think one of the poor marketing aspects of having that golf course was if you know anything about golfers, they don't stay in super eight motels. Okay. They stay in Holiday Inns, you know, DoubleTree, you know, things like, they stay in hotels like that. So that was the first thing. The second thing is that there was nothing here for them to go to. I mean, you get off the plane, even if you had a hotel room, if you want to go downtown to shop, there's not enough stores and energy down there for people coming from different places, bigger cities that come to our town. So I looked at that. So the things I thought about was two things. Was first of all, we got to get more stores in Redmond for people to shop. You know, the real estate business, like I said, is booming, but I'm not understanding the whole logic of that. So you build a lot of businesses, I mean, houses, but you have no place for the people to shop that live in that town. And that's the case right now. So everyone is going to Bend for all the entertainment and everything else. And so we're just sending the money to you guys to the Bend area and we're just watching it, you know. So I just think that's a bad recipe and a recipe for a disaster. You know, we got to do better than that.
How do you incentivize those businesses to pop open? I mean, I know there's quite a bit. I mean, I think Grayson Hammer in the, in the, in the church is a pretty good example of some hip and cool city type of business that's open. More of those seem to be coming on. I think you're getting a 400-seat theater that's coming open, has an interesting name. I can't pull off the top of my head.
They're talking about a lot of things, but you know, and talking about it is good because that's the start. But the thing about it is we have to make it attractive. And the first thing I would do, or I'm focusing on, is getting the stores that's already on Sixth Street in downtown, which is the, the main artery of the city.
Sure.
Get that booming at first, get that back up and booming again. You know, we've lost a couple, number of stores due to the virus. The ones that are still there are hanging on, you know. We got the SCP Hotel, which is very, very nice. But you know, you walk out of the hotel and there's nowhere to go, you know. So Indigo to Bend, you know, again. So, you know, so we got to get things back up and running again. And I think the city is now understanding that. And I think we're getting on track, we're going to start getting on track to make that happen. And I'm going to be one of the advocates to make sure that happens.
So Redmond first banned dispensaries within city limits in 2014 and has renewed the ban every year since marijuana was legalized in 2015. In contrast, last year, the city event collected 1.5 million in marijuana tax revenues. A million of that came from the city's own tax on dispensaries and about a half a million came from the state's tax. So you've gone on your record stating that Redmond should allow dispensaries. And there's a few city council members that are also on board. Where is this issue at right now?
Well, the issue right now is like, it's not on hold, but hopefully we'll start talking about it. And you know, and I'm, I'm standing firm on this for a number of reasons because last year, 2020, the state took in one plus billion dollars in tax revenue. Okay. And I think one of the fallacies is that the citizens haven't been given correct information about it. First of all, everyone has that old antique mindset about somebody standing on the corner smoking a joint. And it's not like that anymore. What they don't understand, you have cancer patients, you have military people with PTSD that all use marijuana to help relieve stress, anxiety, and a number of other illnesses. Okay. The thing about it, they have marijuana down as a Schedule I drug. It is not a Schedule I drug because it has medicinal purposes. Schedule I drugs are just hallucinogenic drugs that harm you and get you addicted and have no hallucin, not hallucinogenic, has no medicinal purposes. So the other thing is that what a lot of people don't know is how the money is allocated. So you know, for instance, you get 34 million go to state funds of the revenue coming from marijuana. 17 million go to health alcohol, health alcoholism and drug programs. 17 million goes to Oregon cities and counties, 12 million to Oregon State Police and 4 million to Oregon Health Authority. So that money is distributed to agencies and foundations that help the city as well. So I just have to get the mindset changed. And the thing about it is like, so you have a proclamation or ordinance saying that you can't have dispensaries in Redmond, so they just go north to south. You either go to Bend or you go to Madras. It'd be different if there was nothing here and the closest place was Portland. But it's right, right down, 20, 20 miles down the road, you can go get it. So, I mean, it doesn't even make any logical sense, you know. So people stand firm on their decisions because people are in their ear telling them to do that. But you have to look at the benefits and how it's going to benefit the city. So I'm going to keep pushing that issue. Fortunately, I got two councilmen that's behind me on this and hopefully we can get this issue moving forward.
Clifford, you're, you're going to cut, cut really heavily into Ben's revenue. I mean, we're getting a lot of revenue from Redmond people coming in and buying pot here.
Tell me about it. And the thing about it is they don't stay there to smoke it. Because not only do they come to you and get the marijuana and the CBC and all that kind of stuff. What they do is they go to Macy's, TJ Maxx, Costco, Winnie's Co., and every place else. Because they're not just going to go there and come right back. They're like, well, while I'm here, let me do some shopping, you know. And this is the way people think, you know. And I'm trying to tell them, we're just giving our money away. And I don't want to give, I like you guys, but not that much.
I live in Tumalos. I don't want to be totally characterized. I'm kind of in between. Yeah, I can go to, and maybe I'd come to Redmond more if that legalization went through. So we'll see.
Well, with the new administration, you know, I'm almost sure that this may change. And also with the one plus billion in revenue, I'm sure the feds are sitting back saying, okay, we got to get our cut. So.
It's coming. It's just, it's so silly to, for Redmond to be sitting there with this, this ban on. It doesn't, it hasn't deterred one person, not one person, maybe for a day because they didn't want to drive in. But they got in their car and went the next day.
Exactly. You know, you know, they did. That's right. Exactly.
You've critiqued the city's management on the Juniper Golf Course, which has always been a kind of hot potato for politics there. Give us the background on that, on the golf course. It's a, it's a city-owned golf course and what you'd like to see in that area as well.
Well, what I found from my research when I was campaigning was that the citizens of Redmond right now are paying $34,000 a month, which comes out to approximately $403,000 a year, which is almost a half a million. And that bill won't be paid off until 2033. Okay. I'll be 70 in May. So you see where that takes me at, you know. I'm like real chilling in over there, you know, I'm talking about. And I just think that either we got to get it up and running to the, you know, the expectation where it's bringing in good revenue, or we got to figure something out, you know, something else out. I mean, a lot of the taxpayers didn't even know that, that they were paying this amount of money for this golf course. A lot of them even know they was paying for it. And see, I think that's the, the problem with small towns and counties is a lot of people don't pay attention to what's going on. See, as long as it's not affecting directly, it's not a big issue. But once it starts affecting them directly or someone brings it to their attention, then it becomes an issue of concern. And that's, that's what's going on is that, that's why I tell a lot of my constituents, pay attention to politics. Tap into the city council meetings, hear what they're talking about, find out how they're spending your money. Because that's your money. Okay. That you, that we're spending. So if you don't like the way we're spending your money, you need to voice that opinion, you know. And I'm all for that, you know. And I think they haven't had that opportunity. And I think they've been so turned off by sitting in the county, in city council meetings that are so boring and not comprehensive, that they just stop coming, you know. And then like saying, well, you know, I'm making it. So I'll just sit back and relax and take the ride.
Well, Clifford, there's no way with your participation on city council, those meetings are going to be boring. The energy is palpable.
Yes, I appreciate that. And you know, it has to be because we just have to, I want to see the best for everyone, you know. We're, we're nonpartisan supposedly, and we have to act nonpartisan. And what that means is taking care of all the people in this town. And you know, and that rolls me into the homeless issue, you know, can't ignore that. That's a, that's a big issue, you know. And we're starting to work on that right now. We have some things in the works for that. So that's very important. You know, we can't be having people living out in the cold in the tent. Just can't do that.
I have heard that, I have heard with regard to homelessness, that you guys have started looking at that, at the motel takeover thing. Has that been placed on your radar, you know, where, where older hotels are converted into housing for, for folks?
That is sort of, that is, that is the plan. The plan is to look at some of those things like that and kind of make them a wraparound place. You know, wraparound means where not only do they go there just to stay, but they get counseling services and things like that. Because you know, that's the way to take care of business. My mother-in-law owns New Priorities Family Services, which is located in Redmond. She's been there for 30 years. She's the first dual diagnosis service in central Oregon, you know. And she's just a little small, she's small, you know, as far as the number of people she employs. But you know, a lot of the bigger companies came in and kind of, you know, takes all the credit, but she started back in 30 years ago, you know. And she's still there doing it. She's 76 now. And she's still there, you know, and my wife is the operations manager. And they've been doing well all these, all these years, helping out. You know, my mother-in-law has invested a lot of money and making sure people get the services they need, even when they didn't have the money.
So Clifford, in some ways, the dynamic between Bend and Redmond tipifies Oregon's infamous urban rural divide. It's not uncommon to see Confederate flags in Redmond and the population is almost 90% white. So what has it been like for you as a person of color from New York City in a fairly conservative small town? And what do you feel like the city should do to be more inclusive and welcoming to people of different backgrounds and races?
Well, you know, you know, this is my perspective. Like you said, I come from a big city, you know, but I've lived in a number of places, you know. But I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. The most racism that I experienced in my lifetime, and I'm almost 70 years old, was in the Pacific Northwest when I first went there in 77 in the Navy. Then that started changing because they became urbanized and people started moving in. Then, you know, you get diversity, you know. And it's interesting because I was the first African-American male hired for the sheriff's department in Vancouver in 1989. Okay. So now here I am again in another small town with the same dynamics that it was back then. And I'm the first African-American on city council, you know. And you know, and you know, that's not a big deal to me. The fact of the matter is that you have to ask yourself, why haven't people of color moved here? Why haven't other nationalities moved here? And in my opinion, there's certain things and systematic racism that's in place. And people don't understand systematic racism. And when, you know, they want to debate with me about that, when I talk to them, most of them can't even give you the definition of systematic racism. And all they think is black and white and we don't want blacks here. And that's not the case. And that's not the case. The fact of the matter is systematic racism is in housing. It's in how much housing costs, how much rent costs, how much insurance you pay, healthcare, there's a number of things, you know. But what I also found is not many people know history and they don't know a lot about a lot of nothing. Okay. And that's a problem, you know. So what I do in my position, because I get along with everyone, you know. I've sat down with guys that fly, drive around with Confederate flags, had discussions with them. And I try to make every experience that someone has with me a teaching experience. Because if they don't know, they don't know. They've been raised in households that have held these, these truths or whatever they believe, these stereotypes so close to them, that it's been passed down to generations, you know. So when they meet me, I've heard people say to, say to me, they said, well, you don't act like a black person. I'm like, what does that mean? You know, what does that mean? I mean, I don't act like a black person. Well, but you see, the one thing about it is the fact that, like I said, it doesn't matter what I act like, one or not, because you can see I am. And the fact of the matter, no matter how high up I went in life, which I was a commander, a naval officer, you know, now I'm on city council, you're still black when you walk out of that building or wherever you're at. You know, they don't treat me any differently when I walk around the way I'm dressed right now, you know. But when I was in uniform, they gave me all the respect in the world. But when I was on, just driving around, they didn't even recognize me half the time. So you know, my thing is to try to get everybody together. I know it's going to be a big task. But you know, if people see that I'm working in the best interest of everyone, they'll be more accepting of me.
There's some people that of color who don't want to be in that role that you're talking about, where they don't want to be the person to explain what it is to be a person of color or break those barriers down for folks. It sounds like you've embraced the opposite philosophy. Why spend all that energy?
Well, that's just who I am. But the fact of the matter is, the reason why a lot of people of color don't want to do that is because they've been trying to do it for years. If you're my age, this is the thing about it. I am reliving the 60s all over again. Okay. I was in the protest in downtown New York and things like that and all of the stuff like that. And we're reliving, I mean, it goes to show you how easy and fragile our relationship in regard to color and race was. So I'm almost 70 years old. I watched the civil rights from 1960 all the way to now. It only took four years to destroy almost all of that. And we're back almost at square one all over again. Now think about that. So that's how fragile it was. And what I say to people is like, my ancestors have twirled on this land for 400 years for free. Okay. And we're not asking for you to give us anything, a handout. We're saying, all we want is the same as everyone else that comes to this country gets and the same opportunities and the same dreams that everyone has. That's all we want. And people always say, well, you did well. Yeah. They say, well, Oprah Winfrey did well. Yeah. Well, when you could start counting them on your hand, that's a problem in itself. It's like somebody saying to me, well, I got a black friend. I said, oh, you got a black friend? It's not like one or that white, it's a plural in this sense. They said, no, well, there wasn't any black people around. I said, oh, okay. You know, so, you know, so it's, you know, it's all about trying to live together as one. We're all human beings. We need to take the labels off. Why do I got to be a black American? Why can't I just be American? You don't have to have a label in front of my name and say, black American. You know, I was born here, you know. And I'm probably better educated than most people that I work around right now.
Do you find that that's not wanting the label or not wanting to put people into those categories? It seems more difficult now because everything's being, we're all being asked to view it through that lens. We're always all being asked to identify. And I get the sense that's going to be harder, harder to step out from this is who I am and, and this is what I represent. Do you feel the same way?
Well, it's not hard for me to step out because you can see who I am. You know, I mean, it's not like, you know.
Well, you can see who Laurel and I are too.
People, people say to me, they said, um, they said, well, you're black. I said, no, I'm not. And they said, yes, you are. I said, no, I'm not. They said, well, what do you mean? I said, I said, my freckles are just close together. So, you know, and that kind of makes them laugh and chuckle, you know. But I'm saying it's like pixels, you know, I'm talking about. But, um, you know, we need to get past that pigmentation. And you know, think about this, as human beings on planet Earth, and I mean, this is like going out there. But you know, we are in disagreement with each other based on our complexion, which we had no control over whatsoever. I mean, it'd be different if I said, yeah, I want to come down to earth and be a black guy. Or I can, I want to come down to earth and be an Italian guy. You know, we, we had no choice in this, you know. And it's all based on geographics. We lived that in the world where your ancestors come from, you know, and it's like crazy. So, you know, I think we need to get past that. And every time I come to a town that's similar to this one, or, you know, and I say this one, it's like, oh, this is like starting all over again. Because I think it's so important, it starts in the school system. We got to teach history. And it doesn't have to be black history, just history and just tell the truth. And see, we have whitewashed history and that's where the problem comes in at. So when you whitewash it, make up stories, then people start making up their own ideas of what they believe history should be.
Cliff, what are, coming back to Redmond politics for a second, as we close out, we've only got a couple of minutes left. Are there any other hot button issues or things that are on the horizon for you in that community that, that listeners would want to know, know about?
Stand by because, um, no, I was just saying, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, I might be looking at mayor, you know, one day, you know, I, you know. I, I just want to get the town up and running again. And you know, I think, you know, Redmond is a great town. We could make a great turn. And that's what we want to do. We can have urban and we could still keep our little town, you know, atmosphere as well. We could do two things. It's like walking and chewing gum at the same time. We could do both. I mean, and you know, we keep building, you know, we build parks a lot and I'm all for parks, you know. But all of central Oregon is a damn park to me. I mean, it's like, you just walk somewhere, jump in the lake and you ain't even got to pay no money for it. You know, you're in Portland, you got to pay the park to get to the water. And then when you get to water, you got to pay to get in the water. So you know, I think we got it great right now. And we should take advantage of that. And we need to be open to ideas. And I think what it is, people have to open their minds. They have to have vision and they got to stop stereotyping things and putting things in a box. And we don't want to be like that. We want to stay Redmond. Well, how do you want to stay Redmond? When you make the rents too high for the people that grew up here to rent or buy here and can't buy a store here. So you're going to get all outsiders moving in here in a matter of time and they're going to really have a fit if that happens. So what does that even mean? They just repeat what they hear somebody say, oh, we want Redmond to stay Redmond. What does that mean?
I mean, Redmond is, you've got such a dynamic community. The, the, I mean, I think it goes to your golf course. Stuff you were saying about the golf course. The golf course used to be integral to Redmond. Redmond only had a handful of thousands of people. I mean, it's exploding now. And those are the questions that everybody's asking on a more frequent basis is why this, why that, why, why do we have this? And no one knows because they all moved there within the last four years.
But you know what I've heard a lot from people? Here's what they tell me they want. They want to have a bowling alley. They want to have an arcade center. They want to have a roller skating rink. They want to have things that they could do here. And they'll have to get in their car and drive their kids all the way down to Bend to go do it. That's what they want. But I don't see us getting there yet. But what I can tell you is this, our city council is made up of some very good people. They're very smart. You know, we have an ex, we have two ex-mayors. Okay. We got a lawyer. We got an engineer. We got a educator and we have law enforcement. I mean, we have all the dynamics of everything that you could want. We just got to get it stirred together and make it into a cake. You know, so that's what I'm hoping for. And that's what we're moving forward to, you know. And we got a good city manager and the mayor is doing the best he can. He got, he got these, these guys through the recession and things like that, you know. But you know, we got to open our minds up and that's what we got to do.
Well, I'm super impressed with Redmond. It's just become such a dynamic town. It's such a fascinating watch. I think politically, historically, it's going to be really great to pay attention to. And it's great. They got somebody in, in the seat like you with the kind of energy to, to ride, ride with the times.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that compliment, young man.
Well, Clifford, we're out of time for the podcast. Anything you'd like, you'd like to say to listeners and parting as we wrap this up?
First of all, I want to thank Laurel for, you know, reaching out to me. I want to thank you for orchestrating this whole thing. And I think it's good for us to have conversations like this. I also think it's good to have conversations on some of the other issues that we have in our, in central Oregon in general, which a lot has to do with race, education, how are we going to move forward? And things like that, because it's conversations like this that get us to where we need to be to. And I think we should continue doing things like this. So I want to thank all of you guys and the effort you put forward of having me on your show. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Clifford. All right. That concludes the Ben Don't Break Podcast. Thank you for listening.
Have a good one. Have a good one.